Ben took me up. Okay, it is 6:01 PM on February 14th. This is the Monday regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are all five directors, Director Campbell, Director Whitfield, Director Barnes, Director Johnson. We have Acting Superintendent Kim Whitworth, Executive Staff and members of our staff, as well as members of the community. I want to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. Welcome. Members of the public can log into the board meeting using the Zoom link on Board Docs website. And can we please now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are so happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters, there have been previous discussions on these issues either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, her staff, or through outside research. We'll go ahead and move on to Agenda Item 2.04, Review of Agenda. We do have a couple of updates. Let's see, we have two items that are added, that were added a little late to the agenda. 8.07, Resolution Number 1-2022, and 9.03, February 10th, 2022 Meetings. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as modified?
So moved.
Is there a second? There is a motion and a second to approve the agenda as modified. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I all oppose, and the Agenda Item has passed 5 to 0. Okay, on to Agenda Item 3.01, Student Directors. We'll go ahead and have Nathan go first.
Yes. Start off, the bread side with athletics. We just finished our second season of sports this school year. And at the high school, Swim had a very successful season. No admitted to state, but they did really well. Basketball's over, and they were in the playoffs, had a good cheer placed in state for the first time ever, which is awesome. And we've got a few people going to state for wrestling, which is really cool. And dance team, the dance team is still in the running, and they're, they qualified for districts, and they just got their highest points yet. So a lot of cool athletics going on. At Frylands Elementary, they just had kindness week, and the iReady tests are over now. I did those things. They had a great food drive that was really successful, and they celebrated Chinese New Year and Black History Month. We also helped celebrate a Black History Month at the high school. We had assemblies and stuff for that, and it's still going on. And we had some good insights and discussions. And then lastly, this, my thoughts on this board, it's going great. And we just had a meeting for us, who weren't there, we had a workshop. And I think this board's going places. And I'm confident that we can raise the bar even for other districts. And we've had some tough times, but we can recover from them and learn from them. It's gonna be great. Thank you.
Any questions, directors?
I just want to say, Nathan, I appreciate your optimism and your positivity. It's awesome. You bring that every single week, and I really appreciate that. Thank you, man. That's cool.
Anyone else? Nathan, I want to thank you for taking the time to hang out with us during a two-hour workshop and contributing and asking super relevant questions. And so, thank you for your contributions and your commitment, because it's, it's a lot of hours, so thank you. Okay, and Andrew, hello. Happy Valentine's Day.
Hello, thank you. Happy Valentine's Day. Um, okay, so for my report, we're just a few quick things on Sky Valley. It's going pretty well. Been having some, some colds and such go through, but I think people are recovering from those. And what else? Yeah, it's been going pretty well. I think people are, seem to be really getting in the rhythm of things and enjoying school. And yeah, starting our next second semester. And recently, I got an email from Mrs. Janelle Lewis, from the office manager of Malpe Elementary. And she sent me a list of highlights that have been going on at Malpe Elementary. And so I, actually, they've been quite busy this, this, during this time. But I'll give you some of the highlights. In January, Malpe students were able to create a video in honor of Martin Luther King Junior Day. And they read and shared about a book called We March by Shane Evans. And so that was, that was fun. They were able to make their own video. And they celebrated the Chinese Lunar New Year on February 1st. And, and they, let's see what else they did. They created a book display to spark student interest. And they all, of course, this month, they, they, and then they celebrated Black History Month last month. And leave, they created a display on that, too. And that was pretty exciting. They, it sounds like they learned a lot about that. What else are they doing? And then three, exciting news, three of their members, elementary, Malpe Elementary staff members, received nominations for Monroe School District Employee of the Month, which they're pretty excited about. And yeah, and the three employees were, I'm not sure how to pronounce this, but Pamela Shoate, Stacy Shipansky, and Heather Harrington. And Belly Lee, who's a psychologist. And so, yeah, that was pretty exciting, that they were able to get those honors. And I think, yeah, and that's about all that Malpe Elementary's been doing. And yeah, thank you.
Any questions for Andrew and directors?
I'm just gonna jump on the sharing of news from Malpe. And Andrew, thank you for learning about what's going on. Montessori students, all three classrooms participated in a peace, love, and respect march. I know one of, one of those students happened to carry a sign that talked about not killing any spiders. So they had a great time with that as well. So definitely good things happening in Malpe.
Awesome. Andrew, I was actually able to visit Sky Valley Education Center this last week. And oh my goodness, it's, it's so cool. It is so cool. I have to ask, what is your favorite class right now, this, this new semester?
Um, well, I mean, there's so many unusual classes that I really enjoy. It's kind of like, there's just, there's so many I like, it's harder to pick just one. But one, one nice, one class I've really enjoyed is they do archery, which is part of the National Archery in the Schools program. But as, as of late, for the past couple of weeks, they, they have to have two teachers there for safety and supervision. And so, since one teacher was injured, she hasn't been able to be there. And so, since there's only one teacher, he's actually had us do a game called Battleship, which is, you basically knock down bottles on the ground. And yeah, so that's been a pretty fun class. And also archery, I enjoy archery, too. But yeah, there's, I mean, there's lots of, there's so many classes I like, it's just hard to pick one. Like, I'm in a running class, I'm in a leadership class, and they're all, you know, they all have different aspects that I enjoy about it.
That's really neat. Thank you for sharing that. And it's, it's a really special place, but thank you. Any other questions, directors? Okay, awesome. Well, thank you both, Andrew and Nathan, for sharing all of that and for your dedication and commitment to your positions. We appreciate you so much. And moving on to Agenda Item 3.02, Boys and Girls Club of Snohomish County. And I'll go ahead and send it all over to you, Miss.
Hi, my name's Jason Parks. I'm not sure how to share my screen here. I'm supposed to do that somehow.
So Mr. Parks?
Oh, here we go.
All you need to do is hit the green share screen button, sir, and you should be good to go.
I think I can handle that.
Can I just introduce? So Jason, Mr. Jason Parks is the Unit Director of the Boys and Girls Club of Monroe and is presenting a report to the school board.
Okay, can everybody see that?
We can, sir.
Okay. So first of all, thank you for having me. I appreciate you guys taking the time to go over with me what we do here at the Boys and Girls Club in Monroe. I started here at the Boys and Girls Club in March of last year as the Athletic Director and took over the Unit Director position in late July, and have been doing both positions until about a month ago, where we finally hired another Athletic Director. So actually, last, this past Saturday was the, only the second Saturday that I've not been at our sporting events on Saturday. So it's been kind of tough to give up, but it's also been nice to kind of focus on one job instead of two. So 2021 was the 75th anniversary of the Boys and Girls Club here in Snohomish County. The first club opened up in Everett in 1946. Since then, we've grown to become the second largest Boys and Girls Club Association in the United States, only second, only to the Milwaukee, Wisconsin Association. Our reach goes all the way up to Lummy Island, down to Warm Springs, Oregon, over to Spokane, and into the peninsula as well. So we opened our doors here in Monroe in 1981 and have been in our current location since 1997. This is still a city-owned building that we operate out of. And the building includes a games room, which is generally where we have the majority of our kids hanging out most of the time when they're kind of waiting for clubs or the tech lab to open up or anything else to do. This is kind of the main congregating area. The Arts and Crafts Room, where we do obviously Arts and Crafts, is a great spot to do distance learning. It's nice and quiet, there's desks, there's a desk for a teacher to sit at and kind of just observe the room. We have our tech lab, which is about 20 to 25 computers in one tech lab. We use that for distance learning as well. We have the kids doing kind of programming stuff. It's kind of a carrot-on-a-stick sort of thing to learn. It's a reward for good behavior, because they really like, obviously, going in and playing with the computers and everything. But we try to limit their screen time as much as possible. Our newly renovated gym, which had just gotten renovated by the time I started in last March, looks awesome. It has a drop-down divider, which allows us to run, we run, running basketball right now. We run eight practices a night. We wouldn't be able to do that so efficiently without that. And it's funny to see the kids, we run PE for the Monroe Montessori as well. And I remember when some of the kids first started coming there, they were just like, whoa, this is awesome, because it's so bright, everything looks so new. And it's just, they don't have a gym there, is my understanding. So when they get to see our gym and its brightness and just the way it looks, they're pretty blown away, and I can, I can see why. We have a community room where, in the past, we've had community organizations come and do meetings or trainings and stuff like that. Due to COVID, we haven't done much of that since I've been with the organization, but it's something we really want to do once everything kind of gets somewhat back to normal, or more normal than it is right now. We have our full kitchen, which we share with our ECAP folks. And as you can see, they're the Early Childhood and Education Assistance Program, is now running out of our building as well, and they're operating out of our, what was our teen room. They've renovated it, we've got new floors, new paint. And the plan is for them to occupy that space until we can extend our building out eastward. And I'll have a little bit more information on that a little bit later, but until we get that built, they'll be occupying our teen room, which unfortunately means that we cannot have any teen programs. We haven't had many teens come in and out of the program in this kind of window where we wouldn't be able to accept them anyhow, but it'll just be nice to have a renovated teen room and be able to allow a space for teens to come in and use our facilities as well. Because I know that's been a big thing in the past, and I'm looking forward to getting back to that. So 2021 by the numbers, the 1,500 active enrollments, that's both for childcare and for athletics. As you can tell, we've had quite a robust athletics program. The 50 kids that we were doing the distance learning program during the 2021 school year, that's generally the amount of children that we would see during the day when classes were still distant learning and they weren't going to school. So we would provide them with spaces to do their Zoom classes, we would help them with their homework, you know, just give them every opportunity we could to help them out and use our staff to help bolster their education. So that was tricky at times, because, you know, different kids with different Zoom calls at different times, different logins and passwords, which could be tricky at times, too. But we made it through that, and thankfully, we're back in person school, obviously. During that time, especially during the summer and during the distance learning programs where we didn't have kids going to the schools, we would provide breakfasts, lunches, and snacks. As soon as the kids get here in the morning, they get breakfast, make sure they get fed. And then during the school, or the summertime, we'll give them lunches as well, but throughout the year, they get snacks as well. So when they get home, or we get back to the club from school in the afternoon, we greet them off the bus and make sure they get a snack in their belly, make sure they get fed and can operate as they should. So, yeah, so with, so thousands of breakfasts, lunches, and snacks, I'm sorry, I don't have the actual, like, down to the minute detail of numbers for you, but it isn't the thousands. Same with the amount of dollars that we use scholarship for both childcare and athletics. It's just a program that we do, and it's, we've actually teamed with, as far as the athletics go, we've teamed with Dick's Sports. They have a program called Sports Matters, where anybody that's enrolled in any sort of government assistance program is eligible to have their enrollment fees 100% paid for by Dick's Sports. And that's been great. It's something that the Everett Club has kind of found out and has kind of spread through the association, but we're trying to expand that out throughout the Snohomish County Boys and Girls Club, so we can get more kids playing and at no cost to them as well. The gifts that we gave away during the holidays were donated by various generous organizations. You know, we would just give out, we had so many toys at the end of it, we were just, we had them kind of displayed and would let kids just take a toy as they left, and we still had toys at the end of it. So that was great. And we helped promote the Big Heart, Big Smile, their toy giveaway this fall, their winter as well. So that was awesome, to team with those guys. We also offer youth development programs. Our Power Hour is just kind of like their hour or half hour to do their homework or any sort of educational activity if they don't have homework. We have them read books, do word searches if they don't have anything to do as far as like traditional homework. Our Torch Club is basically like our student body programs, where we have a president, vice president, secretary, and treasurer. We just had those elections, and the kids did really well. They did all the speeches in front of everybody, which is really good to kind of build that confidence. Their first goal is to raise enough money to buy the, like, magnetic blocks that they stick together. We've had those in the past, and they generally get busted up pretty quickly. So our thought was having them raise the money and actually pay for them would maybe give them a little bit more incentive to be a little bit lighter with those and make them last a little longer. Inspire Her is a program that's geared towards our younger female club attendees. We have professionals from various different walks of life kind of go over what they do, how they became in that profession. We've had video game makers, authors, musicians, all over the spectrum. It's been really cool to see the girls kind of get an idea of, you know, that they can do this sort of stuff and see somebody in their position that succeeded and that they can do it as well. Fine Arts, kind of self-explanatory. The Triple Play, that's where we have the mind, body, and soul that we focus on. So the mind is healthy habits, which is more, you know, nutritional sort of stuff. The body is daily challenges, like in the morning, when we get kids out of breakfast, we'll have them go in the gym and just run around, do different sport stuff, just get them active. And then the soul is just social recreation, where we kind of have them focus on emotional regulations and responsible decision-making, stuff like that. Youth of the Year, we just had our annual Youth of the Year banquet this past Thursday, I think it was, at the Everett Country Club. Our representative from the Monroe Boys and Girls Club was Katie Mine. She works at the club, she's a senior at Monroe High School. She's a member of the varsity tennis team. She's Vice President of their DECA chapter, where she just won first place in her competition and is going to the regional competitions here. For competing in the Youth of the Year, she won a $2,500 scholarship, an iPad, and I think there was another scholarship as well. And then we also have fun clubs, like Minecraft Club, sports clubs, movie clubs, stuff like that for the kids. Athletic programs, so we're just wrapping up our winter basketball program. We have two weeks left. The regular season wraps up on the 26th, playoffs start the 28th. And so then, we were going to be expanding our soccer program as well. We did, we did soccer for the first time here in Monroe, and it wasn't great. So we had one of our coaches, who was actually a licensed coach by US Soccer, come and kind of help us out with the rules and get our act together as far as how we can develop these kids and get them just a good base of soccer knowledge, and they continue to grow that as they get older and stick with our program, hopefully. And yeah, so as I mentioned, we have the Dick's Sports Program, which will cover everybody's, if they qualify, will cover their enrollment fees. So we are trying to really promote that program as well. Summer basketball, we're not going to do a full league like we've done in the past. We just announced last week that we're going to do a three-on-three tournament for grades three through 12, and we're hoping that will be kind of a new thing. It'll be four weeks long. Each team will get eight games, so we're doing double headers. So hopefully, that'll work out really well. And then, let's see, our spring registrations opened up, and those will be closing on February 25th. So we're looking for another successful program. We have 24 basketball teams in this winter program, which I'm pretty excited about. I think that's a pretty good number, and just hopefully, hopefully, we can continue to grow that and just get bigger and bigger. The ECAP, so as I mentioned, excuse me, we're partnering with the Volunteers of America. They've taken over our teen room and are housing their ECAP program out of there. I believe there's 15 to 20 families that are currently using that. They have been getting the word out, it's been growing. The picture in the lower left there is the exit out to their little playground area, and that is where we will be extending the building when we do get the funds. And when we do break ground, it'll be extending east out of that door there. And yeah, we'll have a playground, all sorts of good stuff. I believe two rooms in addition to what we have now. And then, yeah, we'll get our teen room back, we can have our teens here, we can have our pre-K kids and just have, you know, just a great place for kids of all ages to hang out in Monroe. One of the last things I wanted to mention was, we have our, we got our HVAC renovation completed, which added heat and air conditioning throughout the building. Unfortunately, this was turned on two days after the like 115-degree day in summer we had this past summer. So we had to struggle to make it through that, but ever since then, we've been smooth sailing at 70 degrees, so it's been great. I believe this was part of the $475,000 grant that we were given by the county. So this was nice to finish up and have a nice, excuse me, air-controlled facility for everybody. And this is just the staff here. As you can see, my name, I'm the Unit Director, my program director is Kim Gallo, Athletic Director is Jack Foley. He just started a couple weeks ago, fresh out of Washington State University, has a degree in sports management and sports communication, so things are going to be great with our sports program, it's going to continue to grow. Those are our email addresses, if you need to get ahold of us, just random pictures of the staff here interacting with the kids, we like to have a little fun. So it's just nice to have a good working environment with so many good employees. And that basically is what I have. So thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Directors, do you have any questions for Jason?
I have a comment, like, oh, go ahead, Jeremiah.
I'm sorry, mine's super quick and, and maybe seems trivial to others, except for maybe Director Bumpus, but I just need Jason to pass a message on to Jack and just tell him a very big Go Cougs.
He'll appreciate that, I'm sure. He's a large Cougar fan.
We all are.
Especially Vic, especially Vic.
I just wanted to say thank you. I'm, I was impressed to hear about the Torch Club and students doing elections, having just gone through an election and knowing how stressful speeches can be.
Yeah, yeah, they did really well, which was nice. It was, yeah, it was really cool to see them like practice, get like, they were, they were ready to go, and it was great. And, you know, the losers of the election sometimes didn't take it so great, but, you know, it was, it was like, okay, so you didn't win, but if the other guy that won isn't here, you slide right into that position. So, you know, it's all good.
I think that's fantastic. And then I'm also always excited to see community postings about the ECAP program. I think that's wonderful, glad to hear that that is growing. I'm sure that there are constraints right now with COVID, but I've always been curious if there are any programs that happen in partnership between the Boys and Girls Club and the Senior Center, just because they're so close there, and that can be such a great relationship. As I, I live in a multi-generational household, and I know how much my family benefits from that, and so I'm just wondering if that's anything that's ever been done.
I think that it has been done. Since I've been there, we haven't really forged any sort of relationship there, but as you're saying, it's right across the street. So it's been on my list of things to do for a while now. We've got a good relationship going with the Montessori now, so I'm excited about that. They send the kids over twice a week to do PE in our gym, and it's been working out really well. So just, that's one of the things that, since I don't have the Athletic Director stuff on my plate anymore, now I want to start getting out more in the community and just getting out there and start making more relationships.
That's awesome. Thank you so much. I'm excited to hear about it.
Of course.
I didn't have an actual question, Jason. I am curious about the, the extension you had mentioned discussing a little bit further. Do you guys have an estimated timeframe on what that would look like and what that's going to include for the community as far as amenities and programs to be able to expand?
I don't know a specific timeline. I know that we have an ask-in with the legislature for more funding, so I'm guessing that at least till the end of the session that's going on right now, I wouldn't know. I know that we're supposed to be building on two rooms, and I'm not sure 100% if those are both ECAP, or if they're going to be like one of ECAP and then one of just like another community room. I can get you guys answers for that, if you'd like me to follow up with that for you.
And then some of that's kind of preliminary and down the road. Just curious, is just, you know, with partnership with the school district as well, to see, you know, where, what that offers for, for students as well for after-school, because I know this is a huge portion of after-school, after-school programs. And so that would just be really cool to, if there's just information the community can, can learn as that develops. And I know, I know that's probably still maybe down the road, but I appreciate any, anything that you can share would be awesome.
Yeah, I'll see what I can put for you guys and send that out.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jason?
Comment, thank you so much for all that you do for the kids and our community and our community. My kids have done basketball, and they're super excited to start soccer. So I just so appreciate that you're a part of our community, so thank you.
Well, I appreciate that. It's been fun so far. So, yeah, like I said, just looking to expand stuff, grow the soccer program. Like, it's like, when we wrote our rules last year, we really didn't have much of an idea, like, the Athletic Directors, nobody was really versed in soccer. So having our coach come through that was like certified through the US program and kind of getting our stuff together, I think it's really going to make a huge difference.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Jason. I also wrote down just that, kind of the expected completion of that expansion, and so I look forward to kind of getting more as, as it progresses. And then I was also curious about the ECAP program, and just, I think you said you're servicing, you're serving 20 families. And just, I think you said you're servicing or serving 20 families currently, and I'm wondering if there's a waitlist or if there's expected numbers that are coming. And so just moving forward what that looks like. I don't know if you have an answer right now, if there is a waitlist or not.
I don't think there's a waitlist. I think that they're open to enrolling as many kids as they can. I don't know what their cap is. But I know they've just been hovering right around that 20 kid mark for a while. And if you would like, I can put you in contact with the director that's been running that site, if you'd like.
I would love that. Yes, please.
Okay, for sure.
And I just want to say thank you for all that you do, sports and athletics is just such an important piece for mental, emotional health for athletes. And I have my own children actually at Boys and Girls Club currently. It's like a wrestling match mostly, but you know, he's out there and, and he's trying. So I appreciate all that you do and all that you bring to this community and thank you. And I'm glad that you have some additional help. I mean, yeah, Go Cougs.
All right, I'll be sure to pass along to Jack that everybody was a Cougar fan.
Awesome. Are there any other questions for Jason?
I think that Sarah also, because Sarah's also a Coug, and I think that from, from our facilities guy, from Victor Scarpelli, he would also like to pass on the Go Cougs specifically. That's very important for him.
I will do that.
He is wearing crimson today. I like that.
It worked out. Awesome, Jason. Thank you so much for presenting and for that additional information and we appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 3.03 Legislative Report, and it looks like we have something from Director Whitfield.
Good evening, everybody. Well, I am following the WASA, WASDA School Updates, that's Administrative Association and the School Directors. And they're in the fifth week and I went to the Legislative Conference, the virtual one several weeks ago, and listened to some speakers and their priorities. The main components of the K-12 priorities are improve health and safety for students, support for special education programs, specialized funding to maintain existing staff, equitable and ample resources for basic education, and enhanced infrastructure to bolster student learning. And there's currently, there, because we're in session, there's, I've counted 104 different bills that are in front of the legislatures for, from the education side. And I think there's, it started out with like 2,500 bills and there was a cutoff on the 7th and coming up on the 15th. And based on whether those, how those bills have progressed determines whether there are any life in them. I went through the, the summary that WASA has and I just wanted to just mention a few that were of interest to me. There's one House Bill 2660 about federal healthy, hungry, free kids and providing a way for free and reduced lunch. It's 26 pages long. Their staffing allocation. This has to do with to fully fund nurses over three years along with the flexibility for new allocations for staff in the category of physical, social and emotional. There's several pages on that. Employment stabilization. In the House, the Senate Bill, they are talking about making a comparison for the students and the budgets from the, the 2019 to the 2020. And projecting those for the new school year. There's two kind of approaches and one of them wants full funding and the other one wants funding that would provide 50% of the district's enrollment decline. There's one for pupil transportation. And it has to do with the school districts report transportation expenditures for transporting the most vulnerable students. Including students that are homeless, foster care or special needs and reimbursement for that. There's an interesting one about a simple majority for bonds. Currently, it requires 60% participation in order to pass. They want to change that, but it's constitutional amendment and requires two thirds approval by both houses. And the other one I'm interested in is see if we can ever get any funding for 522, the mess that that's in. It has to do with the transportation budget and that's been going back and forth, they're kind of dueling bills between the Republicans and the Democrats, but at this point, there is a $16.8 billion, 16-year broad range proposal. So WASA has a weekly update where they summarize all the activities that are going on in Olympia. And then I also get WASDA. I think it's almost daily updates about bills. So quite a bit going on. But trying to keep on, on top of them and seeing what the changes are and which ones are moving forward and which ones are, didn't make it. That is it.
Any questions for Director Whitfield?
Yeah, how do you get those weekly updates?
Well, if you go to WASA and then I don't have the exact. Well, I just do the WASA legislative dot WA. And then that takes you to, they call it the TWIO, this week in Olympia. And then they cover it by week and that gives you an overview, a summary of all the bills and where they're at.
Oh, thank you.
Sarah?
Yeah, so that's awesome. I also just learned about that QIO place to be able to follow what's happening at WASA. And then on WASA, if you go to the Legislative and Advocacy, that's where you can sign up for those hot topics and they'll send a summary every Friday. And it gives you action items, it gives you updates on the, the bills like Chuck is talking about. Did you find out with the, the one for the, the bonds, because I was interested in that too, right? That's really interesting. It's my understanding that currently it's, they had wanted to do a simple majority that it in committee is now being discussed as somebody could bring it forward as a 55%. So the simple majority is, is my understanding is sort of dead. At least for this legislative session, but that it's, there is an opportunity for somebody to bring it forward as a 55% instead of that simple majority. And then I also wanted to ask you, Chuck, I was learning about school board directors. First, they have a Ledrep learns that WASA put on, there was one last week and they're going to do another one in March. That's open to all board directors. And it was some really good information just about what's happening in the legislative session, but also for what's going to be happening in the interim. One of the things that they talked about too, though, is the opportunity for directors to testify for bills that they feel their district can benefit from and to share personalized stories. And so I'm wondering if that's something that you have, have considered doing. I know it's, I watched my first testimony, I haven't signed up for it, but kind of an exciting new, new thing, but I was curious if that's something that you, you had considered doing for Monroe.
I've done it before through a separate lobbying organization that I was part of for the licensing. But I have considered it, but life's busy and that's basically the short of it. We got a lot of things going on. I would like to. But if the opportunity comes up, I'll jump in there and give it a go. It is important.
Yeah, that's, that's awesome. I'm glad to know that you, you have experience in it. The one other thing that got brought up at the Ledrep's learn that I thought was interesting of all those bills, like that list that you gave, it was huge at the start of the session. None of them had to do with special education. And so I know that's something that WASA is going to be looking at for the interim period after this legislative session is, is something to bring up. And I think that's something that's important for Monroe.
That's, that's true. A lot of emphasis is on the social and emotional and the mental health. That's where they had the additional funding for the, the nurses. But there are several bills that address that. So I, I was encouraged that they're that they're funding that and they're, well, it all comes down to funding, they can make a rule, but you gotta be able to pay for it. So I'm glad that was addressed because the kids are, you know, having a tough time and that needs to be, you know, considered and legislation forwarded based on that. So it's kind of in line with the special, special needs. But I'll keep an eye out if, if there's some that address that specifically. So thank you.
I think there was Chuck, and Sarah, I think, or sorry, Director Johnson, Director Whitfield, I think there was HB 1808 and SB 5581. And that just talked about reimbursing districts for the cost of transportation for students with written IEPs or students experiencing homelessness. It's kind of an alignment, kind of not, but at least there's something, I think, there.
Wish they would list all the House bills and Senate bills in numerical order, because they kind of bounce around and they might be on the 25th page. But it's, they really do a good job.
That's a lot of information. Thank you so much Chuck for diving for that. Do we have any other questions?
I did. And it's, I'm not trying to put the cart before the horse here, because I know later on, 6.01 on our, our agenda, we have levy conversation. But where, where our levy stands right now, we're looking at major funding issues personally for Monroe. So when you're mentioning the fully funding of nurses and employee stabilization funding with the, you know, either fully funding or the 50% decline, I think that if we can maintain some updates on those funding issues as well. Monroe is in a very critical state right now because of that, because those types of staff positions are what get funded from things like this. So I think that for us, being able to maintain that type of funding, we're going to have a conversation about the librarians as well. And I'm sitting here going, how are we going to pay for this to make this a reality? And so I think that if, if we can keep updates specifically as well with those bills as they move forward, that would, that would be, I think, really, really pertinent for us as we look at what the next school years are going to look like and how we can do as best for kids and make sure these critical positions continue to be able to be available to serve students. So.
That'll be a good approach because it's kind of daunting to look at everything and try to determine the priorities. I mean, some, some are obvious, but that's, I'll give a report based on how the, the state funding or the federal funding can help us out. Or if there are new requirements that we're going to be responsible for. I know there's one regarding levies, but I don't have the bill right in front of me. But I'll take that approach next time. Thanks, thanks Jeremy.
Jeremiah, the last thing that I, from WASDA, what they were saying about the funding, there's both, there's the House Bill and there's a Senate Bill. Right? And when both of them went to committee, there were some changes. So, so one thing that came out of those changes is that it would be a rollout and it wouldn't be a full funding of those positions. So that was the initial ask was that it was full funding, that got shifted down to 50% funding. And then the rollout was over, I think from the House Bill, it was 22, 23, and then another step from 23 to 25. And the Senate Bill was a little bit different, and not the same type of thing here. The funding isn't, even if it gets through all the way through legislature, it's not going to be full funding and there is going to be a free to four year rollout.
No, that makes sense. I just, I think that having a bunch of information for us, that's going to help. That's going to help Brenda making really critical decisions as well moving forward. I know, I'm sure Brenda, you're looking at that kind of stuff really closely as well to figure out how are we going to make that work. But I think that for us, this is, these are, there's a lot of issues, things that we need to fund in our district, but these are, these are people's jobs and these are critical roles in our district. Especially, you know, one for educational reasons, but also with our health needs that we have that are different than they ever have been before, because what our nurses are doing for us with COVID and their regular jobs as well. I think all of that is, I think, I just, in my mind, it's a high priority because this is about student safety and it's about also the education of our kids. And so if there is funding available for that, how are we able to make the best decisions to keep those priorities up there. So I appreciate that.
And to expand on that, so that's, was that SB 5595? Or House Bill 195195? Well, I think that one calls for, so they re-categorized it. Sarah, is that, and it's a physical, social and emotional support staff. And so that includes school nurses, social workers, psychologists, guidance counselors, classified staff, providing student and staff safety and parent involvement coordinators. And so we just, that, that's a great idea, just staying on, in the know of, of those pieces and that information.
Yeah. And those, that's, that's the thing for me is there's this huge connection here between, this is, these are major positions that are levy is funded because these are not funded by the basic ed, state, or state taxes. And this is what this bill would, at the very least, you're right, Sarah, we're not going to get full funding. But it's going to help, it's going to help at least with what we're about to all lose, so.
Absolutely. Okay, I'll take that approach next time. It's a great idea.
Any other questions for Director Whitfield? Awesome. Thank you so much Director Whitfield for doing all that reading and sharing all of that information for us. Okay, going on to, let's see, Agenda Item 4.01, Audience Comments. And we welcome comments about school board and district decisions, processes and concerns. I will take a few minutes to remind everyone how this works. Each speaker has three minutes. However, several are here on the same topic, a representative may be selected for the group and speak for 10 minutes. In doing so, the individuals in that group yield their time to their representative. It is important to note that a separate process exists for concerns about staff. Audience comments during the school board meeting is not the forum for staff complaints. If you are here for that reason, please contact any staff member and they will help you learn more about the staff complaint process. Be aware that if at any time during a speaker's comments, their words begin to approach a personnel concern. I will remind the speaker once to keep comments centered on district or school board decisions, processes and concerns. If that speaker continues with staff related comments, I will give 30 seconds for the presenter to immediately sum up their thoughts and return to the audience. Again, please contact any staff member to help with how to go forward with a complaint about personnel. And you may provide public comments, actually not virtually. Okay, so we'll just go right into it, 4.01. And Keith, are you ready?
Yes ma'am. It looks like our first individual on the list is not in the, in the Zoom meeting at this time, President Bumpus. I've looked for him several times and I just cannot locate him, so.
Okay, we'll go ahead and go on to the second person and then we'll return if, if the person comes back on.
Okay, Celia, if you are in the meeting, could you please raise your hand? Because I think there may be somebody on here that you may be, ah, there we go. Okay, thank you.
Celia, are you on?
Okay.
Okay. Hello?
Hello, I'm here. Yes.
Can I please have you state your name and your relationship to the Monroe School District?
Celia Bradley, former teacher to the Monroe School District as well as parent to the Monroe School District. I am speaking for a group tonight and I would respectfully request my full 10 minutes, please. Your Director Superintendent and Honored Guest of Monroe School District. Never before in the history of Washington has your job been so difficult. On behalf of the parents, guardians and residents of Monroe School District, we extend our gratitude to your service. Since the National School Board Association has attempted to weaponize the FBI against concerned parents, I am unfortunately compelled to state this disclaimer. This letter and mail documents are in no way meant to cause you to feel threatened in any way. I hope that you see these documents as an important I hope that you see these documents as an important, as an opportunity to receive support. Since we are not allowed to meet with you in person, the public disclosure requests have been mailed to all Directors of the Monroe School District. Many districts across Washington State, including Seattle School District and several more throughout King and Snohomish County will be or already have been served the same documents over the next 30 days by thousands of parents statewide who have come together as a unified voice. To ensure that this effort is recognized as a demonstration of support, the Snohomish County Sheriff has also been given a copy of these documents and informed of our peaceful intent. We recognize there is a fundamental conflict of interest between school government and parents. School government has a vested interest in the system as a whole, while parents have a vested interest in the children. We have identified that the source of this conflict may stem from the fact that our local school boards have been forced to give away increasingly more decision-making authority to the Washington State School Directors Association, WASDA, and other state agencies. The Superintendent of Public Instruction, Chris Reifdahl, has clearly threatened to withhold taxpayer funds that rightfully belong to our school district. Based on whether or not we comply with health policies, we may or may not agree with. Nowhere in the revised code of Washington is power granted to Mr. Reifdahl or the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction, OSPI, to withhold or bribe with the funds that they are tasked to dispense to local districts. Is it possible that if Mr. Reifdahl indicates or acts on the threat of withholding funds, this would imply extortion on his part? We, the people, founded this country with a structure that was designed to keep the greatest authority at the local level of government. Yet our governor and state agencies have made unilateral decisions for the whole population while ignoring the voices of local school boards and parents. Perhaps we lost sight of that original vision of strong local authority when we let state and federal agencies like WASDA, OSPI and the National School Board Association, NSBA, gain enough control to withhold our state funding over matters that should be a personal medical choice for every citizen. All of us share the responsibility of getting ourselves into the dangerous predicament of a few people dictating to the masses. We also share the responsibility of getting ourselves out of this predicament. There is a solution and a path forward. The documents you have received and will continue to receive are our first act of helping you. Our local school board, take back your rightful authority to determine how best to represent the parents of this district. Please use these public disclosure requests as an opportunity to educate yourselves and us so we can better understand the entanglement we find ourselves in with OSPI, WASDA and other state agencies who are overstepping the lawful boundaries. According to RCW 28A 345020, all Washington State school boards are required to be members of WASDA. Representative Joel McIntyre has introduced a bill currently being drafted in the Washington State Senate that proposes that local school board membership in WASDA be optional rather than mandatory. Making membership optional would return decision-making authority back to the local level and send a clear message to WASDA that we erroneously let power become too centralized while failing to represent the citizens' voices. WASDA has been treating Washington students and parents as if they belong to one large district rather than representing the authority of the 295 elected school boards in the state. In addition to providing the information requested in these documents, we ask that the Monroe School District Board do the following. One, reach out to our district's legislators expressing your support of Representative Joel McIntyre's bill to make WASDA membership optional. Two, strongly urge WASDA to withdraw membership from the NSBA. Currently, almost 20 other states have left the NSBA. And Washington parents are very disappointed to see WASDA silence on the matter. Pass a resolution, three, pass a resolution acknowledging and affirming that parents are the primary stakeholders in their children's future. Tenasket School District recently passed this resolution and its neighboring districts are considering doing the same. A copy of this resolution can be provided to you. As we finish the 2021, 2022 school year, we envision a harmonious partnership between parents, school district leadership and legislators to restore the freedom of personal choice over what our teachers and students wear on their faces and put in their bodies, as well as restore authority to the local level of government. However, if these freedoms are ignored by the Monroe School Board, we will take our children out of the public school system by the fall of 2022. As you are well aware, our 55,000, over 55,000 children have been withdrawn from the Washington State Public School System over this year. And that number will more than likely triple if mask mandates are upheld and a COVID vaccine is made a requirement of attendance. As a large and growing body of parents across Washington State, we have heard your collective plea for cooperation and help. You've been sincerely telling us your hands are tied by WASDA and OSPI. We understand you now. So together, let's untie your hands and restore your authority to represent us, the parents of Monroe School District. Sincerely, Celia Bradley, representing Eileen and Greg McPherson, April Garmeyer, Barb Jones, Beth Nybert, Denise Miller, Dylan Neary, Evy Green, Gina Dollinger, Grace Acosta, Greg and April Havener, Hank Bradley, Anna Lucusa, Janine Burkhart, Juliana Cotts, Karma Crabtree, Kelly Munger, Liberty Aldrich, Nancy Johnson, Rachel Roberts, Rhonda Miles, Teresa Poole, Tiffany and Jake Wheeler, Chrissy Brown, Dahlia Gonzen, Deanna Makinson, Deborah and John Stillfox, Hannah Davison, Jamie Snyder, Jane Wittenberg, Monica Hammerquist, Randy Shibley, Cherie Stasmonder and many others within the Monroe School District that are joining this alliance daily. Thank you.
Thank you, Celia.
Yeah, I'm ready to promote Melanie.
Thank you.
What did he say?
Well done, Celia!
Hello. Hey, Melanie.
Hi.
Hi. Can I please have you state your name and your relationship to the Monroe School District?
Yes. My name is Melanie Lockhart and I'm a mom of three with a first grader in the district. And I'll be registering a kindergartner for the fall. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I want to start out by saying thank you for the increased communication since we broke for winter break. It's a breath of fresh air to have consistent messaging coming to the community. And I also want to thank you for prompt responses when contacting the district. Last week, I emailed Ms. Whitworth and the board about contact information for the board being out of date on the board docs homepage. I know that that website is separate from the main webpage, district webpage. And I imagine that you all deal with the backend of the document management more than the front. So it was an easy thing to not update right away, but within 20 minutes of a quick email, district staff had it updated to reflect the current board. And furthermore, the link to the Awesome Black History Month webpage wasn't working from the Facebook page or district website earlier this evening. But with an hour of a comment, that was fixed. So again, thank you. And then for a little bit about the levy, it goes without saying that the results of the levy are disappointing. My family voted yes, but I'll also be the first to say that while I had hoped it would pass, I expected that it wouldn't. This district is still a mess and it won't be cleaned up overnight. And I certainly don't think anyone has all the answers right now, but it needs to be a collective effort to make it better. Now, I don't know how the five directors voted. I hope all five of you voted yes in support of our students, our teachers and our schools in the community we share. If any of you did not vote yes, I would ask you to reflect on why you are actually serving on this school board and would further ask that you resign and leave space for someone to serve who does support our public schools, both financially and with their votes. And again, I hope that statement does not actually apply to any of you. And for those of you who did vote yes, please speak to your constituents, talk to your voters. It's not the only thing that can help, but it's a start. There's, and then one last thing, which I had initially planned to suggest at the last meeting before I switch gears. But I know four of you were not members of this board prior to the last superintendent transition. But up through winter 2020, it used to be that board meeting agendas included a review of the draft of the next meeting agenda. Obviously additions could be made between meetings, but it offered a chance for the board and the MSD community to look ahead. So I'd like to suggest that the board considers re-adding this item to its future meeting agendas. I think it would be another piece that could help with your commitment to transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Thank you.
Okay, I've promoted Robin.
Awesome. Thank you. Hey, Robin, can I please have you state your name and your relationship to the school district?
Sure. Hi, I'm Robin Hayashi. I am a sixth grade teacher at Park Place Middle School and also the president of Monroe Education Association. And I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of the group. I have a few follow-up questions that arose out of the last school board meeting and the events of the past two weeks. I've not received answers to the questions that I presented to you at the January 24th meeting. I'd like to repeat, why is Chris Capell limiting the scope of the investigation into Justin Blasco? Has she been given the liberty to expand the range of the investigation if information arises to warrant that? In addition to those questions, I would also like to know, has Chuck Whitfield recused himself or otherwise been removed from reviewing or the decision-making around the investigation into allegations of misconduct against Justin Blasco? If not, please explain to the public why someone who is so clearly biased and obviously still in contact with Dr. Blasco while he is on administrative leave will not step away from what is supposed to be a third-party independent investigation. Additionally, I want to call attention to the discussion at last board meeting, at the last board meeting regarding the cost of public records requests. While the board's discussion implied that the community's public records requests comprise the entire expense for attorney fees, that is actually untrue. The public has every right to check on the details of the workings of this district as we are a public entity. To make it sound like public records requests are the root cause for a large expenditure in our district is disingenuous and continues this culture of mistrust and divisiveness in our district. As mentioned above, as long as board members continue to act in less than transparent ways, the culture of mistrust will continue and you perpetuate the need for records requests to uncover the full picture. Finally, given the disappointing news about our levy, please update our association and the community as soon as possible what the plan is to move us forward. I want to remind you that without true transparency, because a biased school board member refuses to abide by board policies nor listen to his constituents, you risk never regaining the trust of this community, resulting in crippling consequences for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Okay, and we are moving on to Agenda Item 5.01, Digital Learning Report. Ms. Kim Whitworth, that's all you.
It is me and my fabulous team. So the goal of the digital learning department is to assist students in developing the research, information fluency and technology skills that allow students to be successful in this digital world as well as the digital knowledge and skills necessary to live safely and ethically. Diane Hermes is our Director of Digital Learning. Diane wears a lot of hats in this role. Her areas of responsibility include our library program, middle school CTE, Kansas Administrator, K-12 Digital Learning Program, Student Data Privacy, STEM Computer Science and leading the Instructional Technology Steering Committee. We are so incredibly lucky to have her working with us. She is a true visionary about where we can go and the possibilities that we have for our kids. And, and it's just a pleasure to work with her. So I am gonna now turn this over to Diane so she can talk to you about our digital learning report.
Thank you, Kim. And thank you to the school board for having me here this evening to be able to share with you the work that we've been doing. I'm gonna go ahead and share my presentation. So, so in digital learning and during this presentation this evening, I will share with you a brief history of the vision casting from four to five years ago that has shaped the direction of digital learning today. We will review data and statistics and the steps that have been taken up to now in the process of that revisioning. Digital learning has two staffing teams, our digital learning teachers as well as our library support specialists. Everything we do ties back to the, to Monroe's three commitments to powerful instruction, equitable access and high expectations. This is Monroe School District's phenomenal team of digital learning teachers. Briefly, the vision of digital learning is to ensure students and teachers have the digital knowledge and skills to be digitally and globally connected to our world, both now and in the future. Our second team represents each of our school's full-time library support specialists. Again, briefly, the mission of our school libraries is to provide equitable access to books, information and experiences that will support students in becoming lifelong learners. To achieve our mission, we have seven primary goals. I won't take the time to read those to you, but they will be in the presentation that's available for you. I'd like to take the next couple of minutes to review with you the revisioning of our libraries that happened four years ago. In 2016, President Obama made a commitment to computer science education for all K-12 students. Around this same time period, OSPI released guidance stating, effective and relevant computer science education is essential to achieving our vision that every student is ready for college career and life. And if you would like to dig a little bit deeper, in 2018, computer science standards were officially released by the state. And there's a link to that at the bottom. During this same time period, OSPI also released guidance for educational technology standards, stating that Goal Three of the Washington Basic Education Act requires schools to integrate technology literacy and fluency into their curriculum. And below is also a link to those K-12 educational tech standards that were adopted in 2018. So a couple of highlights from the standards that, that we didn't go visit is that students need to be able to think creatively and they also need to be able to work creatively with others. So this data began the revisioning of our libraries five years ago. There were many conversations, a lot of research and vision, vision casting as to how we could support the integration of these new standards while fully supporting 21st century school library programs. These are the highlights and the current practices of the revisioning process. So currently, we staff our libraries with So currently we staff our libraries with full-time library support specialists. We also staff each of our schools with a half-time certificated digital learning teacher. Frank Wagner has a full-time. Our eventual goal is to bring that up to a full-time certificated digital learning teacher in each of our buildings. We wanted to increase the opportunities for student access to libraries. We also wanted to provide and ensure that all students are receiving instruction in computer science standards. Also to ensure that students receive digital citizenship instruction. And to support teachers with the integration of the edtech standards and technology integration. If you would like to have more information about our programs, there are a couple of documents linked below. The first one is an overview of the digital learning teacher and also a five-year plan for our Monroe School District Libraries. So the following slides are updates as to where we are in that revisioning process. I will start with our library program. One of the big goals is to make our libraries twenty-first century ready and provide a variety of materials, information and experiences to support lifelong learning. I pulled this research right before COVID. The data is clear that public libraries across our country are very popular leisure activity, especially for our young adults. So it becomes much more important than ever that we are preparing our students for lifelong learning that includes our libraries. So the for one of the first steps we took in revisioning our libraries. Was creating a self-directed learners by giving them the ability to make choices within our library collections. This brought about a huge change in our libraries and that was by organizing our books by genre. What this meant was that in the picture in the top right, you will see we created a mess in every single library. And we pulled every book off the shelf and they all had genre stickers as you can see in the picture in the left. And to make it easier than to to genify the collection and to set it up that way. So when you walk into our libraries now, students can quickly identify where a genre is. And prior to our genification process, students would go to the libraries and if they were looking for a mystery book. Pretty much their pretty much their only option was to ask the library specialist if they could help them find a mystery book. In which case students were not being self-directed learners.
Chris, Chris Cronus, Chris Cronus, can you mute yourself, please?
So by genrefying our libraries, this aligns with Washington State standards. It creates more independent self-directed learners. And a huge benefit is that it increased the circulation of nonfiction books now that they were located with their counter fiction books. Public libraries today, they offer classes on making coding, building, et cetera. If you go to a public library, you have all sorts of options for things you can do in addition to checking out books. We wanted to provide that same opportunity for students. We wanted to provide that same opportunity for students in our libraries. And so now all of our libraries have maker spaces. This is a place where kids can create, innovate, build, collaborate. And all of these reinforce those computer science and educational technology standards. There is a video down below of a young man explaining the library at Maker Space at Hen River if you're interested in looking that in another time. So also the next step was re-envisioning our libraries was providing greater access to students to our libraries. So now that all of our libraries have gone through the genification process, they also have gone through reinventing of their spaces. So we have reading spaces, we have inviting book displays. And the addition of the Bearcat Cafe at Monroe High School, you can see the picture in the bottom left. Just to create a more inviting space for our students. Students can access the library before school, after school, during lunch, recess and any other time throughout the day. They are open. At all times for any student. This past summer, we expanded our our student access to books by offering three summer book mobile routes. And three schools were open one morning a week so that students would have more of an opportunity to access books. In terms of circulation, I pulled data from reports from our schools as far back as two thousand and fourteen. There is a yearly decline from that time until two thousand and eighteen, the first year of our revisioned library programs. That year circulation went up district-wide about ten percent. The past two years were hard to collect circulation data due to COVID, but as you can see from the chart. This year we are projected to continue to increase circulation compared to the pre-revisioning data in two thousand and seventeen. I also pulled some basic data as a district average on the collection age and the collection size of our libraries. If you are interested in individual school data, there is a clickable link over here on the left-hand side to a chart where you can get individual schools. Also, at the bottom of this slide, this is a clickable link. If you would like to have more information in terms of the American Library Association and the American Student Library Association. In guidance for where this data came from. So as you can see from looking at the data are in general as a district. Our average age is older than the minimum target age should be. We are working on that. With large collection sizes, it does take time, but that is one of our goals is is to Decrease the age of our collection as quickly as possible. The next, the next is the collection size data. And so this varies depending on the size of the school and the type of the school. At the high school level, the recommended minimums, minimum collection amount is ten thousand books for a high school. And for our size of high school, it's roughly around fifteen thousand books. As you can see, we are well below that. In two thousand and seventeen. Our collection average was about fifty-eight hundred. We have worked really hard to add more books into that collection and have increased that to over seventy-eight hundred. With a hope that within the next year or two, we will be at that minimum mark of ten thousand books. I can't say thank you enough to our community partners, Snowell Libraries and Phil's and Phil's Burrito who has Really helped us by donating books and helped us in any way possible to increase the size of this collection. So that has been tremendous and it has really helped fill the shelves in our high school. Our middle schools fall well within the average range and our elementary schools. The the target size of that collection is a little larger than our other schools and that is just because of the wide Variety of reading levels that we need to house within an elementary library. Four out of the five of our schools are well within the correct size of a collection. One is well below, again with the help of Snowell Libraries, we're working diligently to improve the size of that collection. Okay, so we have a new project that we're working on in our library, Celebrate the World Project. And this kind of came about as we watched for several years Janelle Lewis at Maltby Elementary. She has been celebrating Black History and diversity and we've been just watching the great work she does and we said to ourselves. How can we call out this great work and amplify it? Thus was born the idea of Celebrate the World. Director Barnes mentioned this project at an earlier board meeting. We have several members on a committee representing the community, schools and district leadership. Our primary goal is how we can use libraries, the information hub of all of our schools. To highlight and celebrate culture, traditions and diversity. So here's what we are doing. We are, we are creating a district celebration calendar. And you can see there's a picture here in the middle in which we are calling out a couple of areas to celebrate every month. In February, we called out Chinese New Year, we called out Chinese American Heritage and Black History Month. And then in March, it's going to be Women's History Month, et cetera. Sometime I think in May, we have on the calendar Disabilities Awareness Week. So as we call out the celebrations each month, we would like to purchase books that highlight that month's celebration. Put these on display. We'd also like to have read alouds from this, from the staff as well as community. And you can see Director Barnes volunteered and she was our first volunteer read aloud that will be released sometime this week. We also have daily spotlights on our website. And I will show that to you very quickly. Where, where you can see when you, when you pop in here, you're going to be able to see first of all, a video that Janelle Lewis as well as our Maltby Digital Learning Teacher Lori Clark put together. A really great overview with historical information. And then each day we celebrate a new, a new spotlight on someone of that month. And when you click on the picture, it's going to take you out to Get more information on, on the history behind this selected individual as well as videos. There are also good information for parents as well as activities for kids. And so we tried to make it something that can be used by teachers as well as parents. And we have had great response from teachers who use it with their students. So it's really exciting and we're going to continue to do that every month with whatever we choose to celebrate for that month. Okay, so in terms of our digital learning. Folks, these are the main areas of focus for our digital learning teachers. And the digital learning teachers in our elementaries, all of our elementary K five students, they get computer science. Education lessons every other week. In the top right video, if you're interested in viewing, you can see what an example of what that might look like. Right above in the picture at the top, this is a secondary class who has taken Ozobots Robots. And what they have done is they have coded a plot map from a book they read in their ELA class. So a lot of really great things that are happening in digital learning and I will, this young, this young lady says it the best, they love digital learning. Okay, so, um, so our digital learning teachers, they also support our district core digital tools which include Canvas and Nearpod. And several other tools that we use to engage students and to help teachers. And to just meet our educational technology standards. Before I move on to the, to the last slide here, I did want to call out that Brendan and I took a look at the budget. And forty, forty-six percent of our library and digital learning is supported by the levy. And one, one other piece that we do within our program are these STEM kits. And I will, I will just, there's a little video in the bottom right-hand corner. If you have time, it's like eight minutes long, but it really goes over exactly what these kids do. But with the help of the Monroe Schools Foundation and Sue Skilin, we have been able to purchase over twenty classroom kits. And these are kits of robots, Ozobots, hands-on pieces that kids can use in the class together. And the goal of these is that they can take the standards they're learning in their classroom. And then they can apply those in a digital way that is going to, that is going to help them with their STEM education. It's a really fabulous program. Kids love it and teachers love it. And I still, I have teachers reaching out. I have two other teachers right now who just reached out, hey, can I get a kit for next week? So, um, so just some really great things that we have going on with our STEM kit program as well. So I think I went over my time. I apologize. Thank you for your time and I will open it up to y'all. Have any questions for me?
I do, but I feel like I've been monopolizing the question.
Yeah, so I'm a huge reader. I'm wondering, why do you need to decrease the reading level of books in the schools? Or did I misunderstand that?
Yeah, what, um. Are you talking about the average age of the collection?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So yeah, thank you for asking clarification on that. So, um. So when I pulled a report on the age of books, that's what that refers to. So we have some books in our library that are from like the nineteen nineties. And we have other books that are brand new, hot off the press from, you know, two thousand and twenty-one. But when you pull it, an average age of the collection, it just means how old are the books in your library? And so our books tend to be about nineteen years old. Which means on average, if you were to average all of them together, our collection would have all been put in place in about the year two thousand. Does that, does that help?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Diane, I actually have a question that follows up with that. I'm curious, does that include books that are Classics as well, like a, I don't know, like a Grapes of Wrath or Cannery Row or things like that as well. Like these are And obviously those are more secondary books, but those are books that are a lot older. But they're also classics that are a part of like, you know, reading as well. And so I'm curious. Does that kind of pull it a certain way when students have that in the library? Like, let's say you have it for an English class that, you know, that's checked out as a class, a class thing for ELA.
I, I don't think if we took just the classic section alone and everything else in the library was, you know, within that ten to fifteen year range. That wouldn't break it, bring it down at all because there's so many books in the collection.
Okay.
Yeah, so it, it, you know, and I suppose that if you were to really look at our collections, it's our nonfiction books are the Are the older books that that really haven't gone through a good weeding and replacement.
And I guess those are the ones that actually need to be replaced. So did we used to have more books and our numbers have decreased or has the General amount wanted by school districts increased over time?
We used to have more and this kind of happened before I stepped in, so I'm not sure, but I think there must have been kind of a heavy weeding. That happened, which is when they, they take, they go through and take books out of the library, probably older ones. But usually you have a good replacement plan in place at the same time. So that's what we're working on doing moving forward is Weeding, but also replacing those books that are weeded so that we maintain the collection size.
Any other questions for Diane? Director Johnson?
Yeah, I do. Sorry, I'm excited about it. My, my mom is a retired librarian. My grandma was a librarian. I will tell you that last week, there was a Conversation in my household that happened between my kindergartner and my fourth grader. Who had both gotten to work with robots and digital learning that day and, and they were both just so excited about it. So I just want to say how much I appreciate the programs and the enthusiasm for learning that is coming for our kids. I'm also excited about how digital learning Connects with equity in our schools and inclusion. And I think it's, it's a really important topic, you know, it's, it's part of our levy conversation. It's in the legislature right now. There's one bill that is for broadband costs for districts. And then also with, with things like the Celebrate the World Project where I want to I'm excited to see our allyship foster and do well. And I want to encourage those of us who are on An anti-racist journey and inclusion journey. To recognize that there are people whose lives depend on this work and who have been doing this work long before we came to the party. And I hope to see us always celebrating the people who this really impacts and making sure that we bolster them. That we come behind them and we, as you said, Diane, amplify their, their voices, their stories. I think it's really important. So I, as a multi-person, I know I've talked about that already tonight, but I am so proud of the work that Janelle Lewis has done and so grateful. That my children get to be part of that. And so I'm excited to celebrate not just the cultures, but the people who make that That true information and life perspectives available to us.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions for Diane?
One more question. So is it just me or over time, as students get older, do they use the library less?
That, that is, that is a really good question and I wrestle with that a lot. That, that is, that is a really good question and I wrestle with that a lot because I think, I think some of it has to do with when you're in elementary school. You come with your class every single week to the library and then you get to check out books. As you go through the system and you get to middle school, that happens still with your ELA classes, but maybe not as frequently. And then by the time you get to high school, there's specific reading that happens. And so part of, I think part of our job is to help foster that love of reading from kindergarten on so that those statistics don't drop off when you get to middle school and they don't drop off when you get to high school. And so we're really trying to reinvent a culture of reading in our schools, particularly in our high school. So that's where the changes by trying to bring in the Bearcat Cafe. And we took out the, the electronic arms that were at the front door, you know, that sounded if you brought a book through. And, and just trying to bring in a maker space that's going to encourage more and more reading within, within our school culture at the high school. Does it, does that answer your question?
Yeah. So how do we go about helping them, helping all students enjoy the library?
You know, I would love to ask you that question.
That's a good point.
Well, it'd be, I, I really do think that it is something that we do need to reach out to the student body and we need to find out what, what is, what, what is missing from our libraries or what would encourage you to come into our libraries a little bit more? We've made strides, but, but not nearly enough. So what, what could that look like?
Yeah, I have one more, one more quick question. You said that the Smile Library has been a great partner. Are there other opportunities for us to expand, especially at the high school? I saw that gap between the, the collection that we have and where we should be. Are there other opportunities for, for partnership that we can get more books?
Well, I'm glad you asked that because that, that is a really great need because our budgets for our libraries are not, are not nearly enough to do the work that needs to be done in the libraries. So I'm working with Sue Skellin right now on a grant. So she's helping us write a grant and we're hoping to get some books that way. We're also looking at some state level grants and see what might be available there. But certainly any help or thoughts from, from you all or the community. Multiple brains coming in on this can, can be really helpful because others might think of things that, that we don't think about. But we really partnerships right now would be really helpful.
Awesome. Thank you. I will, I will work on that.
Thank you.
I kind of had a follow up with that as well. I'm, I knew the number was going to be high. And as I was looking at your presentation over the weekend and the materials for this. And I even talked with Superintendent Whitworth about this. I, I cringed thinking about where our levy is. And knowing that this is a major funding portion of it. And so, you know, basically you're saying 46%. So virtually half of our budget comes from the levy and we're looking at trying to increase FTEs for digital learning teachers and increase our books that we need into our libraries. And half of our funding is going to go away. And I'm just wondering, you know, grants are great and outside funding is great. But this is not a small dollar amount to be able to do this for kids. And so that's just, I, I get not in my stomach thinking about, okay, oh, where are we going to find this funding? Because this is vital for, for our students and it's about to get slashed big time because of that. So where do we find those funds? And so that's just, this is rolling around in my head right now. I'm just being transparent.
Yeah, keep in mind though, it's not all about the money. There's ways we can go about it that don't include the money. Yeah. Like creating a culture of reading and using the library. So we'll survive, but.
You're right, Nathan. But I'm also thinking about how do you purchase books and how do you fund personnel? Those, those are the things those, that's going to go away. A lot of that. And that's where I'm, I'm, I'm really nervous about that. I understand like, you know, the, the culture and whatnot, but actually being able to to purchase those books as we need to update library and, and those types of things, that funding portion is that, that's going to be a big, you know, we're looking at cutting things in half. And so that, that can be a really difficult, difficult portion. And so I don't have answers though. And that's my, I just don't know.
And Ms. Herms, how much of that money goes to like the online programs like Near Pod and Flipgrid, that sort of thing?
Um, so those come out of a different, a different budget. So the digital learning, the 46% that doesn't, the funds for that was just for personnel. That doesn't include those digital licenses which come out of a different, that's a different funding source.
Good to know.
Yeah. And as far as purchasing more books, part of what we've talked about in the Celebrate the World Committee is some of those other avenues that we can explore to get books. Like one of the things we came up with was possibly doing an Amazon wishlist of, hey, these are some books we'd like to see. Or if you want to pick these books up and donate them, just because a levy doesn't pass, doesn't mean that we can't still ask for help from our community. You know, maybe someone's willing to do a fundraiser or, you know, the next time you go out, you pick up a couple of books and we have specific drop off stations where you can drop the books off. I mean, I know that there are so many people within our community who would be willing to help and step in and kind of fill that gap, you know, that we have there. So I think this is a good time to, you know, kind of lean on them and get creative and think outside of the box with what it is that we're doing to help supply those books to our libraries. And Deanne, I'm just so thankful that I get to be a part of this and to see what you've created when I went on the website and I saw everything that you did for Black History Month and just how detailed it was, every single one of those that you click on here, the books we've added to our library. And here's the Britannica link. And here's a video that you can watch. And when I saw Bass Reeves on there too, that's one that I have learned about more recently from America's Hidden History. And I just, I loved it. And the video that was on there and I just, I think it's great. Anything that helps bring history alive and bring people to life. To teach our kids about so many of those who have come before and paved the way and done amazing things is just awesome. It makes learning fun. So I'm just so appreciative of you and your team and everything that you do for this school district. So thank you so much.
That's my kind of thinking.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that, Director Barnes.
Nathan, one other thing, I don't know how many people are aware of the Cattails Program that we have in this, in the school district. It was actually started, it was a student project, is now parent and educator run. That's another, that's a program where a student made it their project and, and got books into classroom libraries. And so Nathan, if you're, you know, if you're talking about growing this, this culture of readers, I wonder if that could be expanded upon, if that could, you know, that program supports our teachers in classrooms. I wonder if there's one that could support our libraries. So there, there's definitely some models out there for us to look to.
Cool.
Okay, awesome. Any other questions for Deanne? Okay, awesome. Thank you so much, Deanne, for all of your work and for presenting. You did an awesome job. Thank you again.
Well, thank you and I appreciate your time.
Okay. And moving on to agenda item 5.02, diversity, equity and inclusion. And we have an update from Ms. Kim.
So we wanted to update you. Bill Dela Cruz was in town and we were, have a lot of conversations about next steps and what we want to do. And we are being very intentional about getting student staff and community input on our next steps of hiring consultant to work for us or work with us. Um, we're setting up meetings with our students, um, with MEA, PSE, PSEOP, MPA, which is our principal association, Monroe Equity Council and the larger community to get feedback from them on Bill Delacruz's visit. We want to just be really clear. It, it's taking a little time to do this, but we are committed to building consensus moving forward. So we're going to gather this input and this information from our community and have a conversation with the school board and then we will make some decisions moving forward on that. I did have a chance to meet with Zoe and Nathan from Monroe Inclusion Collective to hear from their perspective, kind of what we needed to do to provide authentic opportunities for student voice. In diversity, equity, inclusion, but just in general as well. And so they, they gave me some, some great feedback and I'm going to be reaching out to, to Nathan and Andrew, as well as some of the other student leaders in Monroe High School at Leaders in Learning and Sky Valley. Because what we want to do is put together a student advisory council to give students an opportunity to learn together about the work that we're doing in the district and to provide us input. Um, we do have things happening in our school as we continue to go down this path of building some of these system pieces out and hiring a consultant. For example, we have a No Place for Hate campaigns and I think just about all of our secondary schools. We have RAC and Equity Teams. We have teachers reading books together and studying together and, and doing some, some group work together. We have professional development on inclusionary practices. So for example, providing general education and sped staff an opportunity to learn more about collaborating to ensure success for students who have historically been underserved. And I know that Brett is on here and I'm not sure if he has a minute, but he can share a little bit about, I think it's the University of Washington, I want to say Center for Educational Leadership, but maybe not, but I do know it's U-Dub. I worked with him at Hidden River for a number of years and now they are up at the high school, but that's just some incredible DEI work that's happening in secondary. We also have staff in our schools continuing to use social emotional curriculum to provide students for support so that they feel welcome. Having students feel like they have a connection with adults in the building goes a long way to helping them with social, emotional and also academic. I don't know, Brett?
Yeah, I'm here.
I didn't ask you in advance and I'm so sorry, but can you just like the elevator speech on the inclusionary practices work that you're doing?
Yeah. So I give a lot of credit to our staff for, I mean, this started last, you know, last year during distance learning, just really thinking about, are we, do we have the bar set high, high for all of our students, knowing that if, if we can get kids to grade level and reading and writing and math and these things, like it really sets them up to be successful when they leave the high school and it's very hard to do that when students aren't even given a chance to be at a grade level class. So that, that, those conversations happened last year and our staff, staff took a really bold move heading into this year to include our students in the gen ed because they're gen ed students first, which, which means we have co-teachers pushing into classes instead of pulling kids out. And that's, that's a huge change, especially out of high school to try to do that. And so I just give, give them a lot of credit for having the courage to, to take, take big leaps forward, also not having all of the knowledge on how exactly to do it. So that's, that's where the partnership for the University of Washington comes in and, and AWSP to help us with strategies and answer our questions and, and, and really support us as we try to meet the needs of the kids. In gen ed versus pulling them out. And I want to give credit to, to Mindy Haas and Matt Chalfont, two of our teacher leaders who have really spearheaded that work. And supported our staff through it. So we, we actually had the U-Dub out Friday, visiting classrooms and just seeing how it's going and, and giving us some really, really great feedback. They, they had said, you know, for, for how quickly, you know, you guys took this step, you're a lot further, further along than we thought you'd be at this point. So they were very, very encouraged with where we are. And then also gave us a lot of great feedback on some of our next steps. So I think that summarizes it.
Thank you, Brett. And this is work that David has been championing for years as well, at a systemic level. And so David, I don't know if you have anything to add or if we're good, up to you.
No, I think Brett explained it really well. And it's really the, the building leaders that really set the culture in their, in their individual schools that allow this work to happen. And, and while we have a ways to go across our district, we are, we have really moved in the seven years I've been here tremendously as far as building our inclusive practices. And it's, and it's thanks to leaders like Brett and all the other principals, as well as the teachers, you know, he just caught out a few of them. But you have those teacher leaders at each of our schools, elementary, all the way up through high school. So a lot of really positive work going there around our inclusive practices that we built out.
So we're going to continue to keep you updated on our diversity, equity and inclusion work. And hopefully within the next few weeks, we're going to have a decision made about next steps forward with a consultant. But for sure, we're excited about just the opportunity to build consensus about this and have the whole community move together, move forward together.
Awesome. Any questions for Acting Super Kim?
I have a question. Kim, with the, I know it's been slower moving than some have liked about with Bill Dela Cruz and that process and getting multiple voices. And that's just, that's logistics. Do you have an estimated timeline of what that would look like for that process? Cause I know you're looking later date. What are we looking at? Weeks, months, a month? What does that look like?
We are meeting with our labor partners on Friday of this week. I think Brett is setting up an opportunity for me to meet with the students who met with Bill to hear from them. And we're still looking for a way to have, have feedback from the larger community that came into our Zoom meeting with Bill. And so we want to make sure we get the feedback from them. And Janet, Director Bumpeson, myself already met with Mac. So we're, we, we just getting those times out there and trying to meet with people and, and really hear what they thought and what they want to do moving forward.
So maybe like one of our March meetings, we would probably have a logistic, a realistic time to be able to respond.
I'm hoping by the end of this month, we've got some decisions.
Okay. So maybe our first, then it would be a real, a realistic, just, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to box you in a time, but just to get around my head around it.
Yeah, totally understand. I'm really hoping that within the next couple of weeks, May, moving forward.
Thank you.
My question was similar. I was just going to ask, what does it actually look like? So I heard meetings, are there going to be surveys? Are there like, what are, what are the different methods that were allowing people to provide feedback?
So I thought about doing a survey for everybody, but I really wanted to hear people talking together. So for example, on Friday, we're meeting with representatives from each of our labor partners so that they can also hear from one another. The survey we might have to do for the larger community and just because I, I don't know who was there, who came in and who didn't. So in person conversations and then one survey.
Any other questions for Kim? Thank you for that update, Ms. Whitworth. We will go ahead and move on to agenda item 6.01. And again, Ms. Kim Whitworth.
So we sent out a couple of emails last week regarding the levy. I sent one to staff and I sent one to the community and this was really, really hard, I, I think for everybody. It was hard for the community as well, as well for students and for staff. And we heard loud and clear that we have some work to do. There's, there's a lack of trust. There's a, there's a feeling of, you know, a lack of transparency. They want to see us taking care of some stuff and we, we hear that. So what we are doing right now is doing what, what I call a briefing paper. So it just outlines the different options that we have and the pros and cons for each. So we can run a levy twice in a calendar year. So February is one, we have three more opportunities this calendar year to run again, and that's in April, August and November. We should have that briefing paper ready for the February 22nd board work session where we will present the options and the pros and cons that go along with that, and then make the decision about when to run the levy next. But what we don't want to do is start moving ahead too fast before we've had an opportunity to really listen and reflect and reassure our community that, that we've heard them and we are, we are working hard to do better.
Any questions?
I appreciate the feedback portion of that. I think that's super important. I mean, it's obvious our community feels this is not okay, but this is also going to be very damaging to our district as well, to our students. And so I think it's important to have those conversations and have those opportunities. And I think that that's a huge, a huge piece. So I appreciate you building that in.
Okay. Any other questions? Awesome. Thank you so much, Kim, for sharing all of that knowledge with us and doing all of that work. I know that it's not easy. And so I just, I want to say that I appreciate you. I sit in some of these meetings with you and I just appreciate you. Just supporting and loving on this district so, so much and our kids so much or students. So thank you for all that you do. We will go ahead and move on to business item 7.01. And it is consideration to terminate the EVCC slash shoreline interlocal agreement. Is there a motion that the Monroe School District Board of Directors terminate that interlocal agreement with EVCC and shoreline? Is there a motion that the Monroe School District Board of Directors terminate that interlocal agreement with E V C C and shoreline?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Okay.
There's a motion in a second to that the Monroe School District Board of Directors terminate the interlocal agreement with E V C C and shoreline. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think I got everyone and I, um, the agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to seven point zero to consideration of removal of personal finances, a graduation requirement. Is there a motion to to move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the modification of the graduation table and procedure? Two, four, one, zero, to remove the prerequisite of a personal finance standalone course for the class of twenty twenty-three and beyond. So moved.
Move it. Go ahead.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, there's a motion from Director Johnson and a second from Director Whitfield. To that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the modification of graduation table and procedure two, four, one, zero, to remove the requirement of a personal finance standalone course. For the class of twenty twenty-three and beyond. That was impressive of me right there. Um, and all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. I think I got everyone. All opposed, say nay. No, I, 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 and the ag- agenda item has passed five to zero. Okay.
We'll have a conversation on that at some point.
On which piece, Nathan?
The personal finance part.
Oh, we just, we just approved it.
Yeah, oops.
We discussed it at the last meeting though. And so there's, there should be a lot of information on that last meeting, but we discussed it then.
Nate, have you got the minutes and you can listen to that? I think the video is also on there. There was a full presentation um from. I think both of the administrators and the C T E director on. The logistics on why that is. And it's not that we're eliminating personal finance altogether. We're integrating into other classes, but.
Yeah, I was there.
Yeah, that, that, that was the, that was the conversation.
Campbell. Okay, moving on to agenda item eight. Uh, superintendent consent agenda. Um, and eight point zero eight that the, is there a motion that this Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the superintendent consent agenda? Date of February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. That the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items is listed and presented in the superintendent consent agenda dated February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Um, discussion, yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to board consent agenda, agenda item nine point zero four, nine point, nine point zero four. Is there a motion that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the board consent agenda dated February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second to that the Monroe School Board, School. Uh, Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items is listed and presented in the board consent agenda dated February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, the agenda item has passed five to zero. Moving on to board reports, comments and suggestions. Um, just a few reminders, Friday, February eighteenth and Monday, February twenty-first, there is no school. Um, we're celebrating President's Day. There are, do we have any board reports or comments?
I have one short one. It's just an update on, because I was asked to be on the um. Sex ed committee as a board representative. That is moving forward and. Looks like uh, the teachers, hopefully by the end of the month, the certificate staff that are all volunteers. We have different uh, levels and we also have from special ed as well that are on that. Reviewing curriculums and then the committee is also looking at some of the curriculums. There's a rubric that they're using to go through that as far as state standards and what that looks like for us and the, and the, the. The coalition for the uh, the norms and stuff like that as well from the committee. And so I'm, I'm hoping that, I, I know Niall is going to have that. Uh, to present to us, but it is moving forward. It's, there's a long process with that, but it's exciting to see like we're major, major steps moving forward. To get that prepared. And then Molly on the I M C committee, that should be coming to you pretty soon as well. If, yeah, Kim's nodding her head because she's going to know all that stuff. So it looks like we're going to have everything within the timeline that we've, we've had for that. But Niall's doing an amazing job. You know, keeping that process moving forward and getting staff uh, and community members involved in that process. And so I was just really excited to see that process moving forward as well. So. Um, that should probably be coming toward for toward to uh, to our table as a board, probably by the end of the school year to be able to have that ready to go for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So. That's exciting. That's all I had.
Thank you, Director Campbell. Wants to go now. All right, Director Barnes.
Um, so I had the opportunity to do two tours uh, since our last board meeting. The first one was with Director Bumpus and Victor. He was kind enough to show us around Wagner Center um, to see what the building looks like, uh, what's housed there right now. And Director Bumpus and I kind of got the opportunity to dream a little bit about this space and feel the nostalgia of the old building. Um, and Victor informed us on a lot of different things. It was just a really good meeting overall. Um, and then the second opportunity that I had was just this last Friday with Director Whitfield and Victor again was kind enough to show us. The warehouse at the district office where we store dry goods for food service. Um, and we were able to go up to the high school and meet Jody, who is the head of our food service team up there. Wonderful, wonderful woman who works so hard, her and her team to supply lunches every single day to our students. We got to see what that looked like. As the kids came in through lunch period, they all knew what to do. It was like they just came and they grabbed their selections and lined up in line and gave their numbers and went out and. I was thoroughly impressed with the selection that were offered. I couldn't even believe it. I mean, there were bags of carrots and celery. They had apples salads that were done. Uh, so many different things for the kids to choose from. I was like, man, this is way different than when I was in high school. This is amazing. Uh, and just how they make it work and the attitude that they have and they love what they do. So. Uh, shout out to all of the food service workers within our district who make our lunch rooms run and serve breakfast and lunch to our kids every day. Um, you work so hard and we see you, we appreciate you and we are so thankful that you are here. Um, what else was I going to say?
Did, did Director Barnes freeze? Okay. Okay, I thought it was my screen. Well, at least she's smiling. All right. Um, we'll wait for her to come back. Uh, Director Johnson? Oh, Director Barnes, you're back.
The internet here at the district office hasn't been particularly on tonight. It keeps cutting in and out on me. I don't know why. But the last part of what I said was lunch is still free. We're still giving free food to kids. So um, no kid needs to go hungry. And the view at the high school when you're sitting outside eating lunch is absolutely fantastic with the mountains and oh my gosh, and it was a sunny, beautiful day. It was just. A fabulous experience all the way around.
Well, thank you both for going in and for the compliments to our awesome staff. I'm, I can't be more excited to have the great people that work with us. So it's very cool to show it off. So thank you.
And we appreciate you too, Victor. You're amazing. I just, the more I learn about you and what you do and learn from you, I'm just so thankful that. We have you here in the Monroe School District. So you are, you are amazing.
Well, thank you all very much. Much appreciated. I love Monroe. Go Bearcats.
Thank you, Director Barnes. Thank you, Vic. Uh, Director Johnson?
Yeah, sure. I'll, I'll jump in on the celebration fest. This is great. Um, so I uh, am scheduled to go on a tour of Hidden River this week. I am really excited. About that, um, and to see all of the cool things that are happening. Um, and I've also been reaching out to some people. So I. I love hearing about all these tours that directors are going on. I am hoping we can make this a regular thing. Um, and I. I, some of you may know that I really got into button making during the campaign. And so I've been working on putting together some MSD appreciates me buttons. Um, I've reached out to some folks to see if we could put together like a, a box. That um, directors and administrators could check out from the district office and take with us when we go on these tours. To really demonstrate how much we appreciate the folks who work in this district because it's amazing. So. I'm, I'm excited to hear some reports already and and I'm excited to keep that going. And thank you to everybody for all the work that you continue to do. Through, through challenging times. We, it's really a great community. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Johnson. Director Whitfield, you have it.
I do. Uh, first, I want to acknowledge the, the passing of Tyler Biddle, some mechanic at uh. The bus barn. I actually was uh, underneath the bus talking to him about four wheeling and working on vehicles. Was very young, so that was tragic. And I'm very sorry that it happened. Great things happening at Monroe School. By golly, a lot of great things. Uh, I went and visited three schools. Um. I met with uh, Principal Brett Willie. Uh, he talked about uh, the areas that he had written me a note about, uh, which I was going to cover. Also had a chance to go out with uh, Assistant Principal Rachel Bleakley Bailey, and she showed me around the premises and. We got a chance to talk. Um, I also, you know, I was making some notes. Um, as I was going through the school, I also went through Frylands and Frank Wagner. And uh. I put my notes down and I told. Principal Presley, I said, I'm writing like a second grader. It was fitting to go through. And so I, I asked him to rewrite some. Items and put them in a meaningful manner. Uh, so I wanted to talk about uh, the classes that I visited. First off, it is so fun to go out and visit with, with the principal and watching the young kids. It's just. Renewing. It's just refreshing. Um, good to see them in the class. Um. You know, my purpose was to look at, you know, we have academic goals and achievements to get uh, the rates up in terms of education. So I got it. An opportunity to see how the tools that are being employed by the school district by Kim, our academic. Chief Academic Officer. And the. The funds that the board is using for uh, different types of curriculum and how they're being, how they're being employed. So I met with uh, Principal Presley and this is, this is a report for the classes that we went through. So in Mrs. Muller's third grade class, the students researched and wrote papers focusing on animal adaptations and then presented them to the class for student feedback. We got to hear a report on the panda, the great wolf, the poison dart frog. Mrs. Anderson, the second grade teacher from UW Bothell was working on phonics for A R and I R. So they also participated in sharing visual uh, schedule and working with the teacher on those phonics. Mrs. Gillespie was in the hallway with a small reading group during the time. Mrs. Hayne, a third grade teacher was uh, extending the book Ish by Peter Reynolds. Where students shared their personal writing about Ish in front of the class. Students use. Documents in the camera and use the audio system. Mrs. BP in kindergarten classroom is doing an author study of Brace Lynn as part of their current uh, interactive. Read aloud books. This corresponded with this week's Chinese lunar new year. So we got to uh, see the books and review that. And the kids were creating and. Uh, drawing Chinese dragons. Mrs. Slater in the fifth grade, so current math fellows. With E S D one eighty-nine and she was playing. A strategy game against your class on multiplication and prime numbers. Mrs. Carlson, fourth and fifth. Was involved in mystery science lessons involving volcanoes in the ring of fires and students were answering questions. And as a side note, uh, Principal Presley and I were talking about the types of rocks. There were igneous, metamorphic and, and. I can't think of the other one. Uh.
Starts with an S.
Sedimentary. That was the obvious one. Thank you. Uh, so we had a little side conversation about that. And then as we were going through, I learned. About the teachers conferring and assessing students in the halls for reading comprehension. Uh, there was a calming corner in each class for social emotional regulation, an opportunity to take a break so they could. Hide in a little cubby and kick back. They had these little chairs that rocked and little things for those busy boys and girls. So they could, if they're fidgety and on the move, it's just like, that's something I would, I would use. You know, in the classrooms, there's the teachers and, and I'm explaining these types of things because I'm. Uh, communicating this to the community. You know, all the teachers and administrators, they know all these things, but individuals in the community that are listening to this. I'm educating them as I become educated. So the teacher has a microphone and their speakers throughout the class. So even though they have a mask, they're able to. The students are able to hear them and be able to come up. To the board and do audio visual. So the, on the technology side, the technology team, Keith and your crew. Uh, helps to implement that and to have that work successfully. Uh, using document cameras and Chromebooks. They also had, they recognized kindergartners for counting to one hundred and got a certificate and a colored wristband. In fact, in one of the classes in the kindergarten, this little girl told me. That she knows how to count to one hundred. And I said, well, who, who told you that? And she goes, I taught my, well, I asked her, you know, is your, your parents? No, I taught myself. And I'm like. You taught yourself to count to a hundred. So, you know, adult interaction kindergartners, that's good. Um. They also have a radio show sharing the contributions of African Americans as part of Black History Month. And they recognize two people each day added to the display. So earlier I had met with uh, now switching to Frank Wagner. And I had met with uh, Principal Elena and Assistant Principal Deb Henderson. And this is a, a report uh, based on our visit. So we visited Esther Paz and Melissa Hitzko's classroom, their partner teachers in the dual language model in kindergarten. It's interesting going to a class where there's two languages. I could understand one language, but not the other, obviously. We visited uh, Jody Urban's first grade classroom that was monolingual. Uh, visited Rachel Phillips and Andrea Vay's classroom. They are partner teachers in the dual language model for the first grade. He put down, uh, we discussed the current dual language model fifty fifty in regards to language acquisition. And he said, I asked a question regarding the public belief that learning two languages at once places a student further behind, behind. He says, on the contrary, research and data from established programs demonstrates that students acquiring two languages are outperforming their monolingual peers. Says, we're making great stride at Frank Wagner. Now we have the ability to see our students in person. We have curriculum we never were able to use to its intent. We talked about Eureka Math and how they got a slow start during the pandemic. And you put down the highlights, we're currently working on the kickoff of our kindergarten readiness campaign for the twenty twenty-three school year. Based on data, our youngest scholars coming into K kindergarten are not adequately prepared. And this was really uh, stunning. The, the level of the kindergartners uh, starting point. Uh. That's something that needs to be addressed and you know, the board can have a conversation on that. But if, if the kids can't come into kindergarten and they don't have an adequate level of education. Then they're, they're behind from the very beginning. Uh, we're currently in the midst of implementing uh, English language development into our lesson planning. We want to be visible to all our classrooms, monolingual and dual language. We are working on developing a stronger and more sustainable professional development community based on the work on the district's guiding coalition. Just something we've mentioned on the board meetings uh, in other discussions. This work is especially important, important at kindergarten as we launch our campaign for the next year's school year. This work is especially important, important in kindergarten as we launch our campaign for the next year's school year. We want to be crystal clear that what the absolute essential standards are for kindergarten. By identifying them and focusing on them, need to know versus nice to know. We hope to close the opportunity gap for scholars. In addition, this will benefit our first grade colleagues. Because they will not feel they have the ten spot, spend time backfilling the information. Said, I'm doing a lot of good work. We are doing a lot of good work. I'm privileged to be the leader of a hard grouping. Work of individuals of singular focus and closing opportunity gaps for our Bearcats. One thing else, so I want to understand system. So I've been through the bus barn and the food services. And there's something else I follow up with, with Victor's crew. I, as I go around, I look at the buildings and see if they're in good shape, if they need paint, if they need repair. All of them are very nice. So your tech scholars are being used wisely. So I also look around the rooms and. Just to tell you, in the future, if I visit your class and not evaluating you or judging you, I'm just. Coming in to say hi and just looking around, just Kim and I and each of the principals have done. So. Anyway, kind of a lengthy report, but we have a lot of. Good work that's happening at all the schools and we're on track to increase. Achievement and high expectations as our strategic plan sets up. Bam, there we go.
Thank you, Director Whitfield. Okay, I think everyone has gone. Okay, so just a quick recap of the last couple of weeks. I was able to tour Frank Wagner. I walked around with Deb and we visited, I think, every classroom and walked. Through all, uh, all the hallways. It's a huge school. I didn't realize it was really neat to be there and, and. I've never actually took Spanish and I speak Spanish, never taken Spanish classes that have to do with math or science. That was like completely different for me. And so it challenged my brain a little bit because I've, I've never studied those things in Spanish, right? So that was really, really neat. And thank you so much, Deb. And she invited me back again and so did the third grade staff to sit in on a PLC meeting. Because I do get to sit on the PLC conversations. I've never actually seen one in real life and I was able to go and visit with the third grade teachers and. They're just, they're so awesome. They're so cool and so awesome. And it's, it's really interesting the way. They look at the processes and the systems already and making sure that they are being equitable with all other students and they all have. Access to all of the things and, and, and just help them succeed and, and seeing and recognizing. When certain students need different support. And so that was really neat to sit in on. I was also able to visit Sky Valley Education Center. Karen took me around the entire campus. Coolest part was walking into a classroom with, it was K through second grade students. So they're like five, six, seven. And they had hammers and nails and they're building boxes like wooden boxes. And I thought, I don't know if my twelve year old knows how to use a hammer. But that was really, really neat. And they had their little goggles and I just thought, oh my goodness, they're, they're just really cool. And walking into pottery classes and art classes and Spanish classes and math and science. I didn't even realize the full extent of the stuff that we have to offer here in our own district. That was, that was really, really special. And I got to see my old counselor, Mr., shout out Mr. Eggers. He was actually my high school counselor. And he remembered me for all the good things, of course. But that was really neat. It was like a high school reunion about four of the admin who were there. Were at Monroe High School when I was in Monroe. So that was really neat. I also got to visit leaders in learning with Blake. Thank you so much for taking me around and visiting all of. The classrooms. I was able to hang out with students, which was so neat, so cool. We just have the coolest students and. And it was a really great reminder that we have just brilliant, caring, loving students, staff and. And, and, and teachers like brilliant, brilliant, loving, caring. I can't say enough. It's, it's such a great reminder to be able to walk halls. And speak and have human conversations. And that was really special for me the last couple of weeks. I also was able to sit in on a PLC meeting with kindergartners over at Fryland. And kindergartners are really cool too. And kindergarten teachers are really special too. And I just, I'm so appreciative to be brought in on those conversations and be able to witness it. Firsthand. So thank you so much for extending those invitations. Thank you for allowing me in that space. And for allowing me to just be a, you know, like a list, a listening person right there and ask the questions that I'd like to ask. And thank you for allowing it to be more relevant. The, the one consistent thing that I did see was. How do we give teachers more time? Because these are really cool things that they are doing. How do we get them more time? And that's, that's a consistent thing because it's all good stuff that we're talking about. It's all good stuff for students. So how do we find more time? That's like a, that's, that's, I think, an everlasting question though. And so having, giving them more time or resources, more help in order to help. Do all of the great things for students. And so, but at the end of the day, we're doing such cool things here. We have, we are, oh, holy moly, my whole bucket was filled the past two weeks just being able to visit. And engage with staff and teachers and students. So appreciate you all very, very much. And that is my report. Okay, any other questions? Anything else we'd like to add? Okay, it is Valentine's Day. It is eight seventeen, seventeen PM and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a great night.
Happy Valentine's Day.